Okay, I guess we'll get started with the Newport City Council meeting for Monday, April 20th, 2020, 6:30 PM. This is a remote meeting. At this time, I'm going to go through the roll call of the members of the council. And what I would like you to do is during this meeting, if you can keep your microphones muted until you wish to speak, that cuts down on the background noise throughout the meeting. I believe for people who called in on the regular telephone, to unmute is asterisk six, star six, same thing, or and to mute is star six. On the computer, if you're using the conference call app, you should see a little mute button that you push to mute and push to unmute. If you have a problem, just ones with the video, you can just kind of wave your hand at me, but I can, we'll proceed with that method for now. So what I'll do is I'll go through the roll call, and as you hear your name for the city council, you can unmute and just say "present," and then remute. It just makes it easier for the background noise. So I'll start with Dan Ross.
Present.
Kevin Charbonneau.
Present.
Okay. Melissa Patterson?
I'm present.
Okay. John Wilson? Okay. There's a bit of a delay with the muting and unmuting. I might, if it's quiet enough, I may just leave it all unmuted. It all depends. James Johnson, our clerk treasurer.
Present.
Laura Dogen, our city manager.
Present.
Okay. The first item will be to approve the minutes of April 6. I think I'm just going to unmute. It sounds fairly quiet in the background, so I think I will leave it unmuted for now. I'll go through the roll call for the minutes of April 6. First, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of April 6, yeah, April 6.
Melissa, I move to, I move to accept the minutes of April 6.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
All second.
I heard John Wilson's second. Okay. Okay. Discussion on the minutes? Then if there are none, I'll go through the roll call. Dan Ross?
Aye.
Kevin Charbonneau?
Aye.
Melissa Patterson?
Aye.
And John Wilson?
Aye.
Hey, the motion carries. The next item is comments by members of the public. Anybody who's on the conference call wish to make any comments at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Did someone wish to make a comment? I thought I heard someone say, "Mr. Mayor."
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Chris Roy, Newport Daily. Could I ask you to please just ask the members of the council to identify themselves when they're speaking? I can't see anybody. I'm just on the phone, so I may not realize who's speaking.
Yeah, I will do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, we'll move on. The first item is the self-contained breathing apparatus, SCBA resolution to lease. And we received information in our packet, the resolution, financing. Does anybody have any questions on the lease? I know it's been vetted by the city attorney, and I know they went back and forth with the leasing company, changed the wording on a few things. Laura, do you have anything you'd like to add to it?
This is an exciting project. Can everybody hear me okay? I'm hearing a lot of background noise.
Oh, it's okay. I can hear you.
Great. An exciting project. I'm not sure if John Harlemont could be on the call tonight for a personal reason, but if he's not on the call, this is a project that has been voter-approved in the capital budget for the self-contained breathing apparatus. This is a lease, this is year one of a seven-year lease, in which we will own the equipment after the expiration date of the lease. As the mayor said, it has been vetted by the city attorney, and the city attorney is comfortable with us moving forward and actually wrote the resolution. If the council is inclined to sign that, we're excited about this because between this project and the grant that was approved at the last meeting, this fulfills the big projects that the fire department had in mind. So this is, this is great. We don't expect to take delivery of the equipment or make the payment until after the new fiscal year begins.
But this, the bottom line is this is much-needed equipment that will allow each fireman to have individual, their individual breathing apparatus?
Yes.
Okay. Questions from council members? Then if there are none, I would entertain a motion?
Dan Ross here. I'll move to, I'll move to approve the...
Oh, I think Mr. Harlemont joined us. John, if you just, just joined us, we were about to make the motion to approve the lease financing for the self-contained breathing apparatus, just to fill you in.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we need to...
Okay, so Mr. Ross, would you like to make your motion now?
Yeah, I'd move to approve the resolution to lease the self-contained breathing apparatus for the fire department.
Okay, a motion made by Mr. Ross. Is there a second?
Kevin Charbonneau, all second.
Seconded by Mr. Charbonneau. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would ask, the resolution, the resolution requires the city clerk treasurer to attest, so I just want to make sure that you know that the city clerk is going to be the one that signs the resolution, which I think is fine.
Yes. Okay, so a motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion on this? Then we will go through the roll call. Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Charbonneau?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries. So Laura, you said again, we would take delivery in July?
Yes. The budget was approved, this line item was approved starting in the budget year that starts July 1. We need to get the lease equipment, the lease to the company so they can begin the processing. So we're pretty excited about that. And just to further clarify, the city clerk is the one that signs the resolution and the documents. The way it's, you know, the document itself, most of the signatures are required by the city manager, just so you know.
Yeah. Yeah. Great. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Yes, this is John.
Chris Roy. How many?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Hold on. Did John?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. The product to be delivered in approximately eight weeks in the first payment is not due until July of the next fiscal year.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that clarification. Chris, did you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. How many units were just buying, and what is the life expectancy of them? I'm just wondering, how, how long would they last beyond when the lease is over?
Mr. Harlemont?
Yep, the lease, the lease is, I believe, seven years, and NFPA regs, I believe, is between 10 and 15 years. That, you know, the NFPA regulates that. Our old ones are probably 15 to 20 years old. So this brings us up to date for the, for the newest version going forward. And we've ordered 21 units with 21 spare bottles. So it's a total of 21 bags, 42 spare bottles, and 42 bottles.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, and can the old, can the old tanks be recycled somehow? What, what happens to the old tanks?
Most of them, not, because there's so many out there. There was a company that was, was giving you $5 or $10 for the, for the valves on them, but that doesn't seem to be in existence right now. A few of them, of the newest ones, a few of the mutual aid departments said they might be interested in them. So once we get the new ones and get them all separated, figure out how many we have of what, we'll maybe sell a few of them.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. We'll move on. The next item, excuse me, is the annual adoption of the local emergency response plan. I'm going to let the fire chief kind of explain the plan, but I know, I know it was approved a year ago, and I believe we have to approve it every year, correct?
Correct. Nothing has changed in the plan itself. I did make phone calls and verify all the information on it, so it's up to date. I noted, I called all the daycares. Two of them are no longer in existence, so I removed them from the document. I updated the changes and the officials on the police, fire chiefs, and that corresponding information. So all the information in the document in front of you should be current.
Okay, very good. Any questions from council members?
Yes, this is John Wilson. There's one minor error on page seven. On that one there, it's the planning task three, updated, but he left Jamie Leclair's name in there. Forgot to put his own in.
Okay. I didn't really, I must have missed that one.
I saw it today, reading it, page seven.
Okay.
No other question?
Correct. With that one correction, does the council wish to make a motion to approve it?
Melissa Patterson, I'll move to adopt the emergency, the local emergency management plan.
Motion made by Melissa Patterson. Is there a second?
John Wilson will second.
John Wilson will second it. Any discussion? Then I'll do the roll call. Excuse me. Dan Ross?
Aye.
Kevin Charbonneau?
Aye.
Melissa Patterson?
Aye.
And John Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries. And at this time, we will need an executive session under 1 VSA 313A2 Real Estate, and the council received the memo, and it had the motion. Basically, we need a motion to go into executive session. It's to discuss real estate. Anyone on the council wish to make that motion?
This is Dan Ross. I'll make a motion to go into executive session under 1 VSA 313A2, dealing with real estate.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
Mr. Wilson's second.
Oh, Mr. Wilson seconded it. I heard Mr. Wilson. Okay. Any discussion?
Yes, this is Dan Shirello, and I wanted to point out that with respect to the second water tower, there was a resolution that was before city residents and a bond question. And back in, I think it was 2017, the citizens of Newport said that, to the question, do you want us to have a second water tower specifically to be placed in Derby? They said no. And so it's not clear whether or not people were saying no to it being in Derby, or they were saying no to the second water tower. And now you're in the process of buying an additional property with respect to the water tower when it's not clear whether or not the citizens of Newport will approve such a situation. In addition, at the time, I submitted two pages, two pages of questions about costs regarding the second water tower, and those were never answered. So I think you should have a concern about buying property before you know whether or not the citizens are even going to approve to have a second water tower.
Thank you. Any other questions? Then I'll go through the roll call. Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Charbonneau?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries. We will be going into an executive session. Okay, we are now out of executive session, and we are now on item number seven, which is the conveyance of property for east side water tower location. And at this time, I would entertain a motion from the city council.
This is Kevin Charbonneau. I make a motion to approve option to purchase Main Equities for the proposed water tower site southerly of East Main Street, US Route 5. Authorize Mayor Monat sign the option to purchase on the city's behalf.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
First, second.
Seconded by Ms. Patterson. Discussion on the motion from council members? Then any other discussion? Then I will go through the roll call. Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Charbonneau?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries. We will be going into an executive session. Okay, we are now out of executive session, and we are now on item number seven, which is the conveyance of property for east side water tower location. And at this time, I would entertain a motion from the city council.
This is Kevin Charbonneau. I make a motion to approve option to purchase Main Equities for the proposed water tower site southerly of East Main Street, US Route 5. Authorize Mayor Monat sign the option to purchase on the city's behalf.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
First, second.
Seconded by Ms. Patterson. Discussion on the motion from council members? Then any other discussion? Then I will go through the roll call. Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Charbonneau?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, could you tell me the cost? Is this an easement? I'm sorry. And where is the location, and who owns the property?
I'll let the city manager go through that.
Chris, it's an option to purchase, and it will be made public, so I'll be able to share the document with you. The property is located north on Route 5, next to the tavern. The property is owned by East Main Equities, which is Deana Gray and her brother Keith Gray. It ensures that the water tower, when it's, when it goes to bond, the public will understand that the entire project will be housed within the city boundaries. We understand what Ann was saying, that our feedback was one of the reasons the vote for bond was declined, is because people were uncomfortable having city infrastructure located within Derby. We heard that message loud and clear, and made sure that we've been working for the past year and a half, for two years, with the landowners to make sure the entire project could be housed within the city boundary. So it's, this is a, this is a big hurdle that we've crossed, and we're pretty excited about it and appreciative to the Grays, for sure.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a couple of questions. And could somebody explain again why it's needed, just to refresh my memory, and who's, and who's going to benefit? And, I'm sorry, did the city manager say the cost of the purchase, the price of the purchase?
It shouldn't.
Laura?
Yes, the, the cost to purchase, the, the option to purchase is $500 to start with. They will need to remove their building. At that point, when it is done to our specifications, we'll pay them $45,000 after the bond. So we need, we won't be paying them another, any more money until the bond and permitting is all in place.
What, what do you mean, what building do you, do they need to, do they need to remove?
If you can picture in your mind's eye, Chris, as you're going up Route 5, and you come to the tavern, and you're at the Walmart intersection, it's the building that's most, I think that's west, right along the field, that's most west and closest to the property that's owned by Poughkeepsie Bank.
Are those the old, Mr. Mayor, are those old, the old cabins?
Yes, it's the, it's the group of cabins that are all connected. It's the last building on the right before, basically, Chris, if you're going up Route 5, it's the last building slash property, the last building for the vacant land, before you get to Century 21 Plaza. Yes, it's the old cabins.
I'm sorry, what cabins? I'm sorry?
It's the old cabins by the tavern, but it's only the one section.
Right, it's not the little ones, it's the long building.
Correct.
Yep. And can you, can you just talk about, please, why the city needs the water tower, and who's going, who's going to benefit from it?
How to begin?
Do you want me to, Laura, do you want to go on that, or Tom?
Tom and I are both here. We're just wondering who wants to begin. But Tom's coming to the...
Yeah, Chris, currently, the water main that goes up the Derby Road is owned by the city of Newport. The water is from the Village of Derby. We are pretty well restricted of any new hookups, only into our industrial park. So any other development in the city of Newport is on hold, like the old Palin property that actually the Paulings own, is we cannot develop it with infrastructure for water, unless we're dependent on with, with the Derby, Village of Derby. So this is giving us the control over the city of Newport to develop our property on the Derby Road. And any new, any customer that's currently on that water main would become our customers once we get the tower up and we, and do, do the hookup.
And that would be, Mr. Mayor, that would be both residential and commercial?
Yes, correct.
And, and when you say you're, when, when Tom says he's restricted, or the city's restricted for any new hookup, is that because of what's available, or is that because that's where, in the, in the agreement?
We're, we're only allowed 10,000 gallons of allocation a day, and it's only for the city center industrial park. That's it. Nothing else. So our hands are tied on the Derby Road unless we put the tower in, and the water is our water, and then we have complete control.
What's the estimated number of gallons this water tank will be able to provide to the city?
I didn't catch that, Chris.
Oh, I'm sorry. What's the estimated number of gallons the new water tank can provide?
I'm not really sure on that. We haven't finished the engineering on that project. We're going to keep our 1.1 million gallon reservoir that we currently have. The tower, guessing, they were thinking along 300,000 to 400,000 gallons in the tower. That's roughly to just give us the pressure, is what you need the tower for, to supply the whole Derby Road.
And when, when all is said and done, are you going to be done with, are you going to be done with Derby? Are you still going to be able to get some water from them, or will you not need it?
No, we will be solely on the city of Newport's water supply.
When are you looking, Mr. Mayor, when is the city looking to do this?
What was the question, Chris? You broke up.
I'm sorry. When is the city looking to start construction?
Well, there's a lot of prep work to prepare for the, a bond vote, because nothing happens unless the bond is passed by the voters. And I'm not sure what the timeframe is on that. The city manager can answer that question.
We, we were, Chris, we were kind of hoping for a fall or November bond vote. With all the restrictions going on right now, I'm not sure if we'll be able to meet that. We still have some engineering that needs to take place, but we're still going to push for a November bond vote if possible.
Okay. And, okay, I, I, Mr. Mayor, did you have a total construction cost?
No.
Chris, originally, we were looking at three or four million, but I, at this point, I'm not really sure. That's kind of a hard question to ask, you know, right now, till we get some more engineering done.
Okay. All right. I think I'm all set, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for your patience.
Oh, no problem. Okay. Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
We'll move on. I lost my checklist here. Oh, well. We'll move on to new business. Mr. Ross, any new business?
No.
Mr. Charbonneau?
No.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes. Two things. One, and I just saw it on the email today from the city, the Memorial Day parade and activities have been canceled?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm also looking at, I'm looking at the coin drop one. I think the VFW auxiliary has a coin drop late in May. Is that being canceled?
I don't think that is, but I'm glad you brought that up, because we'll do some outreach with them to find out if there's alternatives. And as you've seen, the restrictions that the Department of Health and CDC are putting out are changing almost on a daily basis. So let's keep, you know, let's keep our fingers crossed that by the time that one comes around, we have a little bit more liberty. But I appreciate you mentioning that, because it triggers me to follow up with them.
Well, I was asked over the weekend, and I know as, we can still, stuff changes, but if we have to, need some lead time. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any other new business, Mr. Wilson? No? Okay. The only new business I had is I shared my letter that I had written to the governor with the entire city council, and I noticed hard time getting used to calling it NVU, but I know a lot of people work at NVU who live here, and so I was very concerned enough that I wrote a letter to the governor about it. I'm not overly optimistic, after watching the board of trustees meeting, I watched their four-hour meeting today, and I'm not overly optimistic they will change their mind, but at least it's got the attention of the governor, the legislature, and it's just a big impact to this whole region. And I look at the students who have the ability to go to higher, go to college, who may not have the other ability, because they can at least live here at home in Newport or the Northeast Kingdom and drive to Linden. And so, that opportunity will be gone if they follow through with their plan. And so, I just want to let the council know some of my thoughts on that whole process. And that's all I had under new business. Laura, do you have any new business?
No, thank you, but I'm glad you brought that letter.
Does Mr. Johnson have any business, any new business?
I do.
Oh, okay.
If anybody watched the news tonight, they had a very, very large protest in Montpelier over that whole thing. Cars and cars and cars going down, they just plugged Montpelier up completely, blowing horns and yelling and that type of stuff. I don't know how many cars were there, but that thing went on for an hour and a half.
They said, Jim, they said there was 100 cars at least that came from up here, between Linden and Johnson, and there was at least 100 cars in that parade.
Now, there was at least 300 in the Montpelier High School parking lot, and they were coming from both directions.
Yep.
I think there was close to 1,000 cars in that whole deal.
Yeah, I know, they said it tied up Montpelier for quite a while, and I know, I've reached out to a lot of my old alumni friends who are all over the country, just to let them know what could potentially happen to the, not just the college, but, you know, the meteorology program that I was part of, like one of the top 10 in the country, and it looks like it could be devastated by this, along with the recreation program. And the chancellor even admitted today that they're moving so quickly, they don't even have plans for all the students, and that's what's sad about it. They haven't even thought about the economic impacts to any of the communities, they haven't even really thought about how to help the students. And so, it's very poorly thought out.
Now, if the state had funded those schools to what the statutes say they should or must, it wouldn't be in this predicament. Just another, I had a long conversation with Bobby Styer, and I told him, you've got longevity down there, so you need to put some pressure on down there, people listen to you down there. He said he would. Okay, well, I've got liquor licenses that need to be approved, and I talked to liquor control, and I can send these in, all I need is the minutes, and they're approved, and a resolution will go along, saying everybody's present and in favor. So, I need a motion that says, move to approve liquor licenses for the VFW, Tavern on the Hill, and the Eastside Restaurant slash Dancing Sale for first, third, first and third class licenses and outside consumption permit.
Okay, so...
We need to slide, I'll just attest to it, and send the man the documents and approve.
So, basically, you just need a copy, you just have to send a copy of the minutes attesting to it.
Right.
Okay, so, I would entertain a motion to approve the liquor licenses. I have the council members state their names, so that that can be part of the record.
Okay, just need to interrupt, whoever makes the motions, motion, make sure you say that you're approving first and third class licenses for these organizations and outside consumption.
Yep.
This is Melissa, I'll move that the VFW, the Eastside Dancing Sale, sale, for second class.
First and third, Melissa.
First and third, yes.
And outside consumption permit.
Right, that was in the most, outside consumption.
Okay, I'm not very clear to me.
Breaking up.
Sorry.
We're getting feedback, we're getting feedback, and I'm not sure if from which computer or telephone. Is there a second to the motion?
Mr. Wilson will second.
Okay, it was a second by Mr. Wilson. I'll go through the roll call. Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Charbonneau?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any other new business, Mr. Johnson?
That's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to old business. Mr. Ross?
No.
Mr. Charbonneau?
No.
Ms. Patterson? Okay, I'm assuming that's a no. Mr. Wilson?
No.
Okay, Ms. Laura, Ms. Ogan, do you have any old business?
No, thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Okay. The next scheduled council meeting will be Monday, May 4, 2020, 6:30 PM. And once again, it will be held remotely, because I don't believe the state will be open or allow us to have groups of people yet, and so, because stay at home, when it will still be in effect. So, that will be our next regular scheduled council meeting, it will be remote. And at that time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:24 PM.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Mr. Wilson made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
I heard two seconds, but I heard Mr. Charbonneau, so, a motion's made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Stay safe, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.